I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on May 23, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Customer Knutson, Gross, Winn.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Gross and Knutson are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the deputy city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item number four, I have a very special presentation this evening. I have a certificate of appreciation for Hills Bank for their significant contributions to the city of Coralville. Whereas, as part of celebrating its 150 years of rich history and bright future, the city of Coralville recognizes and values the dedication, commitment, and entrepreneurial spirit within our community. Local businesses and organizations keep our community, the state, and the American economy vibrant and strong. And whereas, it is without question that Hills Bank exemplifies the spirit of local businesses within the Coralville community. And whereas Coralville Bank &amp; Trust Company established Coralville's first financial institution in November of 1958 at 1007 Second Street. And whereas Coralville Bank &amp; Trust constructed a building at 1009 Second Street and changed its name to Unibank &amp; Trust in 1972, and then Hills Bank purchased Unibank in 1984. And over the past 34 years, has expanded its Coralville facility, as well as the services provided to the Coralville community. And whereas, the Coralville branch of Hills Bank is one of the busiest retail locations in one of Iowa's largest independently-owned community banks. And whereas Hills Bank staff have served and continue to serve and support the community in numerous capacities: sponsorships, and positions, including but not limited to the summer reading program, tours and activities for senior adults, high school leadership honors, the Coralville Community Food Pantry, Penny Bear, Fourth Fest, and the always anticipated active and creative participation in the Coralville Parade. Now therefore, having served and continuing to serve in the Coralville community, the city of Coralville wishes to recognize Hills Bank for their dedication to the citizens of Coralville and the surrounding community. Signed on this 23rd day of May, 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and we have some folks here to accept this. Feel free to step up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and say a few words.
Dwight Sigmiller from the Hills Bank. Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We are honored to receive this award. And to have this opportunity, I'd like to just tell a couple of quick stories. When Hills Bank purchased Unibank in 1984 from Frank Iker, John Hughes, our president at that time, and I, along with several others, met with the council. And Mayor Katchi, in his very distinctive voice, said, "Since you are no longer just in Hills, you should consider possibly changing the name of Hills Bank." And not knowing whether Mayor Katchi was serious or not, we spent quite a few hours thinking about maybe Johnson County Bank, maybe Eastern Iowa Bank, but Michael never followed up. We thought he was kidding, so we kept it Hills Bank for all those years. But second, when we made the purchase in 1984, our real treasurer and the purchase was Keith Jones. Keith had been at that location since 1971, I believe Keith. And Keith came with us when we made the purchase, and as we know, he's been Mr. Coralville, and just a wonderful advocate, not only for Coralville, but for Hills Bank as well. So again, we're honored to receive this award. I'd like to have our Hills Bank staff just stand so you could recognize the turnout we have. So we all, I'll just let everybody know how many we have from Hills Bank here. So again, really, it's our distinct honor and pleasure. Thank you so much for recognizing us.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for all that you do for the community. You really are an institution that is a pillar in Coralville and beyond. So thank you for all of your dedication to our community. Would you like to take a photo? Yes, okay. And Keith, you should be in the photo.
May I be in the photo?
Yeah.
Oh, you've got your heels on.
Come on, photo.
I got your heels on.
Let's go, let's go.
I'm present.
I almost called you, asking if you was okay.
Yeah.
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 I said everyone else come on.
I'll just throw it in.
It's good to see you, town.
Thank you for blocking us.
No relation.
No relation. You're okay.
There you go.
Hold on a second.
No problem.
I didn't have to move. I was hidden.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Yeah, I just saw it. I thought, oh.
That's all right.
Well, careful morning.
Thank you, Brad.
See you, Brad.
Bye, Molly. See you tomorrow.
That was nice.
I can take the room.
You sounded like my minister. I haven't seen you in a while.
Okay. Now, I have a second proclamation to read this evening. This one is for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas, every day, 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And 26 times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, Iowa has an average of 323 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 10 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $4.2 billion each year, of which $53 million is paid by taxpayers. Iowa has the 41st highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearms related to deaths occurring in 127 cities and cities across the nation, including Coralville, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. And mayors and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, and are most familiar with criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, support for Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and recognize gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides, non-fatal shooting across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3, 2021, to recognize her 26th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Pendleton, other victims, and their loved ones, which was inspired by her friends who asked classmates to wear orange, because hunters wear orange, to announce themselves to other hunters, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign with other Americans by pledging to wear orange on June 2, 2023, the first Friday of June, to help raise awareness about gun violence, victims, and survivors, as we renew our commitment to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and our communities safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, proclaim the first Friday in June, June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Further, I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and honor and value human lives. Signed and sealed on this 23rd day of May, 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. And I believe we were going to have someone from Moms Demand Action speak tonight, but I'm not sure that they are here. I will just say that I appreciate the work of that group and their tireless advocacy efforts. And, you know, I think it goes without saying that we know that gun violence is an epidemic in this community, and it's going to take all of us to help keep our communities safe. So, wear orange on June 2. Okay. Moving on through the agenda. Item number six, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time, based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to address us tonight?
Yep.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone and state your name.
And the first one would have to be on your last topic. I'm trying to remember the last time I seen the news that Coralville had any kind of gun violence. I can't remember it. That's why I live in this community, because it's safe. The hours at the new recycle-
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm William Hawbaker. I've been a citizen of Coralville for most of my adult life. Anyway, the hours at the new recycle center down there, it's a nice facility, the way it's set up to drive through, you can see out of the weather, keeps the stuff from blowing around. But the hours are, need adjusted, so that anybody that works for a shift, you know, right now it's seven to three. If you work for a shift, it's almost impossible to get down to recycle. So the hours either need extended or changed to split first and second shift, so that it's more user-friendly. But it is a nice facility. So, the next thing, and I just ran across this yesterday, the barns out by the Ball Diamonds. One of them has rough issues, and I might be able to get used pole barns, steel donated, if those buildings are planning on staying there, because it looks like the windstorm damaged it. And I guess the only other thing is a topic I had three or four years ago when I was here, and I was told that you can't have sidewalks. The DOT doesn't want sidewalks around the interstates, which they get to some extent, but with, I live in Western Hills, they're building bigger, Grand Rail Development's going to be building a huge development there, and that's spilling in. I was wondering if somebody could see about slowing, I can't believe I'm going to say this, changing the speed limit between Tiffin and the outside of Coralville down to 45, or even lower, just because there's going to be a lot more people and coming out of Western Hills. Currently, there's a little rise, if you're right, at 55 mile an hour. In fact, about two weeks back, I pulled out and I looked that way, and then I was waiting for traffic, and I hadn't looked back. Luckily, the person that I pulled out in front of was turning into the trailer court. But with the more traffic, there will be more accidents that really should slow down to a city, like the outside of city, speed limit instead of highway speed. I think that's it. Anyway, I was trying, anybody remember when the last time somebody was shot here?
Right now is just a comment time. We don't discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just trying to remember. This is a very, this is a very safe city. I enjoy living here.
Yeah.
It's nice. Oh, if I decide to start picking up garbage, is there a place, like along the bike trails and stuff, is there a place that I can get rid of that?
Typically, we have trash receptacles around our, around the trails, usually around our purse.
I was talking about, like, going out and throwing pickup truck load, you know, spending an eight-hour day out and-
Um, we can get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah. I kind of figured as much. Okay, and that's all I need. I got to get, keep going. I have a little plumbing job I got to go attend to, so.
All right.
Can you just make sure your contact information, is your contact information on?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
I'm there.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Is there any-
Nice evening.
You too. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us about anything? Okay. On to item number seven, fiscal year 2024 Iowa DOT Consolidated Transit Funding Grant Applications. This is a public hearing, and these are for applications that would provide state and federal funds for transit in non-urbanized areas and/or for transit serving primarily elderly persons or persons with disabilities. So I will open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this with us? Do you have some information?
Um, yeah, I-
With Rob Rock?
I just want to point out that included in our application is a program of projects, which we need to include for anything that we might ever want to receive federal funding for. So you'll see some items in here, the addition of a couple electric buses and so on. We won't know what funding is available till fall of 2023, so we have a little bit of time here before we will know what our actual items might be.
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us on this? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2024 Iowa DOT State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration funding, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Winn. Questions or comments on this item? Okay. Could I get the roll call, please?
Customer Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross and Knutson absent. Item number eight, Iowa River Landing Retail Lease Public Hearing. The owners of the Ex Golf at Iowa River Landing wish to enter into a 10-year lease agreement with two five-year options to renew for 211 East Ninth Street Suites 100 through 125 in the Iowa River Landing District. So I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the disposition of property and approving a lease agreement with Iowa Golf Sim LLC, doing business as Ex Golf, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Customer Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross and Knutson absent. Item number nine, fiscal year 2023 Budget Amendment. This is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 Budget Amendment, and these amendments are necessary due to bond refinancings, capital project expenditures, revenues and expenses that were projected to be higher than budgeted, and use of budgeted reserves for public safety. More detailed information on this budget amendment can be found at Coralville City Hall. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing and approving loan agreements confirming the sale providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2023B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Winn. Questions or comments or discussion on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Customer Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Knutson and Gross absent. Item C. This resolution is for borrowing up to $40 million, $445,000 in order to refinance taxable GO Annual Appropriation Bonds Series 2018E and taxable GO Urban Renewal Funding Loan Note Series 2018I. The public hearing for this loan agreement was previously held on March 14, 2023. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing and approving loan agreement confirming the sale providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds Series 2023A and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this item?
So this is all refinancing existing debt?
Yes. The first portion was the fieldhouse purchase, and this is all refinancing of the arena, basically arena debt, yes, at a much lower interest rate than the first one. Yeah.
And that was one of the reasons we're going through this process of purchasing, is because it actually saves us money in the end to purchase it.
Yeah. And the, and the fieldhouse is actually, the first one is actually a tax-exempt bond. So the arena is general, is not a tax-exempt bond, but the fieldhouse is a tax-exempt bond. So that portion was taken out, and you got an even better rate on that one.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, could I have the roll call?
Customer Goodrich.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross and Knutson absent. Item number 11, public hearing for lots one and two in the Ridgeview Edition. And we have our community development director, Dave Johnson, here to give us an overview. And you're just going to have to stay there, because-
Yes, it's another one of those meetings.
It's another one of those meetings, where like, the next five or six-
Sure.
-items are all you. So I will just, I'll have you, instead of reading the description, I'll just have you go over the particulars of what we're looking at here.
Sure. So a little background on this. City Council approved amending the Coralville Land Use Plan map from corporate campus to medium-density residential back in 2021 for this property. Lots one and two Ridgeview Edition are planned, medium-density residential developments. They are separated by Crossing Ridge Drive, which is also the drive that is going to be serving the new CCA elementary school. And that'll soon be under construction. All the perimeter streets for lots one and two will be public streets. The interior streets will be privately owned and maintained. And development within the subdivision will be two to five units horizontally stacked duplexes, as well as townhomes. In total, we're looking at 117 units with these two lots and 12.36 acres. The average density comes out to 9.5 dwelling units per acre, which is right where it needs to be for a medium-density residential development. Lot one's located on the east side of Crossing Ridge Drive. That's 61 units and 6.75 acres. And lot two is located on the west side of Crossing Ridge Drive and consists of 56 units on 5.61 acres. We have three different building style types. This is building style A, as indicated on the site plan. That was included for City Council. This is building type B. And this is building type C. Staff's reviewed the application and has found that the proposed development use density building styles are consistent with the Coralville community plan, as well as the land use map designation to medium-density residential. It's also located in the west land use area, so as council is aware, we have specific site and building design criteria for that overlay district. The buildings and site design can be considered consistent with the requirements in the west land use area master plan. And staff has also reviewed the preliminary and final plats and have found that they conform with the requirements for preparation and filing. And I would just note that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application at their April meeting, I'm sorry, at their May meeting, I apologize. And by a vote of four to zero, the commission recommended approval. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Could we get the resolution for the preliminary plat, please?
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Ridgeview Edition Coralville, Iowa, introduced by Councilmember Winn, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Customer Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Knutson and Gross absent. Item D is the public hearing on the rezoning of Ridgeview Edition from C2 and from R3 to R PUD2, and the Lot 1 Ridgeview Edition PUDB site plan, and Lot 2 Ridgeview Edition PUDB site plan. So I will open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing, and we will consider the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2023-1006, and ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Ridgeview Edition, from C2 Arturo Commercial District and from R3 Mixed Housing Residential District to R PUD2 Residential Plan Unit Development Two District, introduced for adoption in first consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Customer Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Knutson and Gross absent. Item D is the public hearing on the rezoning of Ridgeview Edition from C2 and from R3 to R PUD2, and the Lot 1 Ridgeview Edition PUDB site plan, and Lot 2 Ridgeview Edition PUDB site plan. So I will open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing, and we will consider the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2023-1006, and ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Ridgeview Edition, from C2 Arturo Commercial District and from R3 Mixed Housing Residential District to R PUD2 Residential Plan Unit Development Two District, introduced for adoption in first consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by-
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Customer Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes, with Gross and Knutson absent. And item F, since we do not have a supermajority, we are not able to collapse the second and third readings at this council meeting, but we will table that and do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, we'll put it as agenda items. The second reading, motion to collapse, have the third reading.
Okay.
Have the final plat, have the site plans, everything can be done next meeting.
Fantastic.
Just like it was going to be.
Like it was intended to be.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, on to item number 12, Lot 3 Red Hawk Subdivision Part 2. And this is a public hearing. And we will start this off with another report from Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is to build a standalone drive-through restaurant on a 1.88 acre site. The restaurant is 2,337 square feet, and it's predominantly brick. Secondary materials include metal panels, as well as EFS. There's 30 parking stalls being provided. That actually exceeds the minimum requirements for the development. We have a bike rack provided, as well as an outdoor patio located on the east side of the restaurant. The proposed restaurant can be considered consistent with the corridor commercial land use designation in the 2014 Coralville community plan. In the development, this is-
And the development, this is also located in the west land use area master plan overlay district. The building and site design can also be considered consistent with the relevant requirements set forth in that plan. And the proposed PUDB site plan amendment complies with the applicable development standards in our city code. The planning and zoning commission reviewed this at their May meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, they recommended that city council approve the application as submitted.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2023-1007, and ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 3 Red Hawk subdivision, part two, from CPUD1 Plan, Commercial Plan Development, One District to CPUD2 Commercial Plan Unit Development, Two District, introduced for adoption, first consideration by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item number 13, Gather Iowa First Edition, and this is the public hearing for the PUD site plan and final plat. This is for a mixed-use development containing five lots to be developed concurrently on the southwest corner of First Avenue and Second Street. This will include a six-story mixed-use building, parking structure, two one-story commercial buildings, and five townhome buildings. And we have Dave Johnson here again to tell us about this project.
This property is currently zoned CPUD1 Commercial Plan Unit Development, One District, and is approved for a mixed-use development. Master development plan for the site was approved by city council on July 26, 2022. The proposed project's scope, uses, layout, and density are consistent with the master development plan on file with the city. Gather Iowa First Edition contains five lots, shown on the screen here. Those will be all developed concurrent with each other. Omitted from this plan are properties in the southeast corner of the site, that is identified for future development. I believe the developers continue to work through land entitlement for that particular part of the development. And the total parking required for the development is 838 stalls, and the applicant is providing 922 stalls. Seventy-three percent of the parking will be provided in the parking structure. Second Avenue and First Street will be public streets, and the remainder of the roads will be private streets, privately owned as well as privately maintained. Lot 1 consists of 4.37 acres. The, this is a six-story mixed-use building, and consists of 11,000. Let me just pull that up, that elevation up. This consists of 11,462 square feet of ground floor restaurant and retail space with 340 residential units above. The commercial and residential uses wrap around the north, south, and west side of the 622 stall parking structure, and the east side of the building opens up to a courtyard as well as a water feature. Lot 2 is .068 acres. This one-story building consists of 5,180 square feet of retail and restaurant space and outdoor plaza area, shown on the south side of this building. Lot 3 is. Sorry. Lot 3 is 1.22 acres and contains 5,870 square feet of commercial building with adjacent green space. This will also be used for restaurant and retail users. Lot 4 is 1.27 acres, that'll contain two townhome buildings totaling 10 units. And Lot 5 is 2.02 acres and contains three townhome buildings totaling 13 units. The buildings are predominantly masonry, glass, as well as fiber cement products. These designs, as well as materials, can be considered complementary to each other, as well as meeting the standards and quality that the city expects in a PUD development. This project area was a focus of study in 2014, in the 2014 City of Corleville Community Plan. Those sections of the plan were forwarded to city council for, for this meeting. The subject property is part of the southeast Commercial District subarea. This area is viewed as a gateway between the University of Iowa as well as Corleville. The community plan notes this subarea, generally referred to as the Boulevard District, is in need of reinvestment and improved design. The plan notes an overabundance of curb cuts and deep building setbacks which contribute to unsafe and inefficient site conditions. Businesses and buildings in the area have also suffered multiple flood events leading to disinvestment over time, and wholesale redevelopment has been in order for the area as a result. The plan describes a number of key concepts towards redevelopment of the site, including pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, improved access management, network enhancements, and aesthetic improvements. The proposed development furthers these goals. Staff has reviewed the site plan. We find that the site design meets the requirements in the city's development ordinance and conforms with the approved master site development plan for, for this project. And the development can also be considered consistent with the goal set forth in the southeast Commercial District subarea in the 2014 Corleville Community Plan. The final plat also conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing. I finally note that the planning and zoning commission reviewed this at their May meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, recommended that the application be approved as submitted. And we do have some people on the project team who are here and available to further discuss, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and yes, we would love to hear from the folks that are, are working on this. If you'd like to step up to the microphone and tell us a little bit more about the project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and staff. It's nice to see you again. I can't believe it's July that we were here last, it's almost 10 months ago. We've been working on this project a long time, we've made a lot of progress, and just to, I'll repeat what I said the last time I was here, our goal with this project has really been to create a destination within the destination, a place where we've got an eclectic mix of buildings and uses, and we've got food and beverage, and we have residents of all types living there, families in townhomes and students, of course, and people working in the neighborhood. So we feel like we've accomplished that here in the site plan. We've created some renderings for you to see how we brought the project to life and the architecture. This is actually a view, looking back towards the building of the townhomes. One of the things that we've spent a lot of time on is, as much on the outdoor space as we do on the indoor space, there's green spaces, you can see here, and both in the front of the development by the retail, as well as throughout the neighborhood. And, you know, we think this is gonna be a very special project, and this, this location is, is a highly visible location, and we think it's gonna make a big impact on the area, and our team is here, Brian Till with Dwell Architects, and Nick Hatz with Shive Hattery, if you have specific questions, but I'll ask Brian to walk you through some of the other renderings, and you can get a feel for the architecture, and we appreciate you having us in your city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan, just tell me when you want me to move slides.
This is good, yeah, this is good. This, you know, this starts, this is the entry to the multifamily, main multifamily building in kind of a high-end hotel, porticus share entry. You see the plaza to the right, you can turn to clip in that, if you want to move to that, Dave. Yeah, down to the, yeah. This is actually from Second Street down through one of the, the axis through the project, you know, a lot of different festival uses that will have the ability to have game day activities, any of those kind of things.
Ryan, sorry.
Yes.
I don't want you to continue before I circle back. Would you be able to point out, like, which lot? Because there's five different lot right here.
That's fair.
Would you be able to kind of pinpoint which lot these in?
Sure.
My, my work differently.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Can you go back, Dave, to one of the colored site plans? That might be the best. That's perfect, yeah. So along the top is Second Street, the hard corner itself, where there's existing Walgreens to the upper right is there, and then First Avenue picks up on the very edge far right. So you can pick up the, the largest building, obviously we're calling Building 1,000, that's the six-story building with five stories of multifamily over the one story of mixed-use and retail on the front, leasing, other amenities, as you can see there. The key to this whole project is that plaza just to the north of that, that green space, yeah, where Dave's got the hand there, which ties that building into the two freestanding, actually that's one freestanding building that kind of reads as two, but a single freestanding, what, it's kind of the hip term, jewel box buildings, and these kind of mixed-use developments. And then the L-shaped one that's over there, that ties that all in. Again, it's very mixed-use. From there down, the, the townhomes pick up on the right side of the project, and then the south side. As David mentioned, that building 3,000 is lower on the right side, is kind of a future phase, as we get entitlements and those things picked up. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, it's, it's a lot to get your head around, and it's a very unique project in that sense. We've been able to really do that placemaking, it's not just a bunch of buildings slapped up tight to the, to the, to the street. We really get that, that placemaking, as, as we were saying, and, and that flexibility, that mixed-use environment, that can, this thing can do 10 or 12 different things over the year. We're really excited about it. So again, there's the front side, a long-facing Second Street, more sort of the northwest side of the, the project, as you saw it on the page. Night view, the proverbial night view of that same axis from Second Street down into the, into the plaza. And, yeah, there's some of these townhomes that we looked at earlier. This is kind of the far south end of that, of that site plan, looking back towards, and having these little pocket green spaces and pocket parks is a big component of what we've been able to do, really blend the inside, outside, and the architecture. Here's again one of the freestanding retail spaces.
This is building three in the northeast corner.
Yes, Lot 3.
Lot 3.
Couple shots of that. And Nick's fine work. Don't sell yourself toward Nick. Any other questions?
I don't think so. I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate all of your work. I, you know, we have a lot of concerns, just initially, about this area, given the fact that there's a lot of, you know, truly affordable housing, and we had a lot of concerns about displacing not just, you know, the affordable housing, but also the affordable commercial space. And we appreciate the way, you know, you have, have worked with us on that, and, yeah, it's, we really appreciate that, and we know that this is just the first part, and that the other, there's some other phases of this plan that will address those concerns that are coming later, but we're still working through the details, as you said, on that
Sure.
portion of the plan.
Okay, exactly.
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
Have, you know, have the crossing of Second Street and in First Avenue, have that been taken in consideration once this is built, and then, because I know that street is always, always busy?
Yeah, hi, Nick Hatz, civil engineer with Shive Hattery. And not quite displayed here, but on the, the first less colorful site plan that was up there, you could see, we are working on signal, signalization improvements at both of the public intersections of relocated Second Avenue and First Street, where there will be signals, as well as pedestrian crosswalk improvements. So be a big benefit for pedestrian safety, crossing those streets, as well as just improved traffic efficiency.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, we appreciate you being here and, and speaking with us tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you all.
That's great, do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I will close the public hearing and we will consider the first resolution.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Gather Iowa Development, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time coming. It's, it's, this is a very challenging area for, for a lot of, a lot of reasons, and we appreciate your work, and, and I appreciate the work our city staff has put in on this as well. Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Could I have the next resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for Gather Iowa First Edition, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, could I get the roll call?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross and Knutson absent. Item number 14, Forever Green Heights, Phase 1, Part 2. This final plat is for the parcel on the northeast corner of North Liberty Road, Northeast and Pendleton Avenue. Dave, what do you have for us on this project?
I would just note that staff has reviewed the plat and finds that it conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I would also note that Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approving the plat.
Thanks, okay. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for Forever Green Heights, Phase 1, Part 2, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item number 15, Forever Green Heights, Phase 1, Part 3. This final plat is for the parcel between North Liberty Road, Northeast, and Scanlon Farms Road. And we have Dave again to give us an overview.
Sure, staff reviewed this plat, it, it conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval.
All right, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Forever Green Heights, Phase 1, Part 3, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross and Knutson absent. Item number 16. This is a final reading of an ordinance that would rezone this area for a 9,900 square foot, one-story multi-tenant commercial building in the west land use area. Could I have that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1005, and ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1 Coral West, Part 2, from C2 Arturo Commercial District to CPUD2 Commercial Plan Unit Development, Two District, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments? Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Could I have item B, the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 1 Coral West, Part 2, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by. Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item number 17, option agreements. This option is for IRL Parkview Investments LLC to purchase Lot 3 IRL Parkview subdivision for the IRL Parkview 3 development, for $13 a square foot. And this is a necessary step to qualify for workforce housing tax credit. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an option agreement with IRL Parkview Investments LLC, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item B. This option is for the IRL Roundabout Developers LLC to purchase the lot on the west side of the south lot of the Hyatt Regency Corleville property, for the Quarry Road project, for $185,000. And this is necessary to qualify for workforce housing tax credit. Could I have that resolution?
Resolution approving an option agreement with IRL Roundabout Developers LLC, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item number 18, workforce housing tax credits. And we have several steps in this agenda item. We'll start with item A. This grant is for Gather Iowa on the northwest corner of First Avenue and Highway 6, with the city pledging in-kind support of $1,000 per residential unit for up to 348 units. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution of support of the application of Rio Development Corporation, RDC, Fund 13 Investments LLC for funding via the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this?
So this is the northwest corner of?
This would actually be the southwest corner.
Oh, okay.
This is the, the one that we just talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was the wrong.
This is southwest, yeah.
Okay.
North, south.
Thank you for that correction.
I was looking at that, too.
Yeah. I'm noting it on my agenda, southwest corner. And then, just a, a quick recap, this, we did approve these prior.
We did.
But that we, that we have to reapply.
Yes, we had previously applied in 2021, and we're not funded. And it's actually a developer's application, but the project wasn't funded at the time. It was, it was, you know, we have been working on this for a while, but it was a lot less developed at that time, so we're hopeful this time. But they, these tax credits have gotten a lot more competitive, so, you know, the applications are due June 9th, we're just hopeful that any Corleville project gets funded. But this one, of course, is bigger than the others, and would really make a nice, a nice impact on that project.
And with workforce housing tax credits often come caps, correct, on how, is that how much they can sell the unit for?
For these, it is how much you can invest in the unit for construction. So the presumption is, number one, they don't want to make it too onerous, so that developers aren't interested in participating. You know, that's something that kind of scares some private developers away if you make it a lot of paperwork. So there's that piece of it, so they've really kept it, tried to keep it pretty straightforward. And so what they do is, they cap the amount you can spend per unit to build it, and I believe this year it's $225,000.
That's what I was gonna?
Yep.
Ask. And, and the way that, and that, 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 can you describe a little bit the impact that that would have, why these are called workforce housing tax credits? Because a lot of times, people get confused by the terms.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there are certainly different levels of affordable housing, and, and a need for different levels of affordable housing. You know, we have a lot, a mix of, of different neighborhoods, and we haven't, we, our community plan calls for a mix of housing, and, and that's what this would be. This would contribute to our mix. There are several projects here in Corleville that have received these tax credits, and, you know, I think that they, they've really added to our, our supply, especially after the flood, and I know that seems like a long time ago, but we did lose 300 to 400 housing units at that time, and it's just been important that we try to rebuild that.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item B. This grant is for IRL Parkview 3 in the Iowa River Landing District, south of Von Mauer, with the city pledging in-kind support of $1,000 per residential unit for up to 50 units. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution of support of the application of IRL Parkview Investments LLC for funding via the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Questions or comments?
So, what, I was trying to figure out what property this is.
So this, this one is Parkview 3, so it's the, so there's two buildings up, Parkview is north of, or east of Von Mauer, so it'll be the, it'll be, the third building will be the one that's directly across from the second building. There's a quarry lane, I think that road is, and then the fourth building eventually will be against the interstate.
All right.
So.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. And then, finally, item C. This grant is for the Quarry Road project in the Iowa River Landing District, south of Kenomi, with the city pledging in-kind support of $1,000 per residential unit for up to 60 units. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution of support of the application of IRL Roundabout Developers LLC for funding via the Workhouse, excuse me, Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 19, Community Development Block Grant Program. The original grant for the Community Development Block Grant Program provided up to $100,000 to purchase commercial kitchen equipment for the Corleville Community Food Pantry. The city is requesting a contract amendment to extend the end date from May 31, 2023, to May 31, 2024, in order to provide adequate time to respond to any potential findings in the monitoring visit, or allow the monitoring visit to occur after May 31, and provide flexibility to complete the work after May 31, 2023, if necessary. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing a request to amend that certain Community Development Block Grant Program Contract, number 20-CVN-025, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments?
Is it standard that we'd ask for a year extension, even though it wouldn't be that long, hopefully?
Right, yeah, we don't expect it to take that long, but it, I think that was the option we were allowed from the state, was you could have a year, or you could have no extension. So, we opted for a year.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really gonna take much longer than that, but just because there are, there's always this, you know, the closeout work that takes longer than you expect, so that's why.
Okay. All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 20, Mobility Coordinator 2080 Agreement. This agreement is for the city of Corleville's share of the full-time Johnson County Mobility Coordinator position for one year, and is not to exceed $17,000. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a 28E agreement with Johnson County regarding a Mobility Coordinator position, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 21, See Click Fix Statement of Work. This statement of work is for a service request management tool, known as See Click Fix, which will replace the current request tracker on the city website. See Click Fix will intake requests for service from the public, assign those requests internally, allow a direct response to the submitter from the staff working on the issue, and measure request performance. In addition to installation, unlimited government, government user licenses, support services, and virtual training services are included. And the first payment will be deferred until July 1, 2023, and is budgeted for fiscal year 2024. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a statement of work with Civic Plus regarding See Click Fix, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 22, West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer. This purchase is for credits from the Cedar River Crossing Wetland Mitigation Bank near Sutliff, for mitigating the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1 and Phase 2, impacting .2 acres of emergent wetland and .2 acres of forested wetland, as required by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and is not to exceed $15,000. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a wetland mitigation credit purchase with Cedar River Crossing Wetland Mitigation Bank for the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. So, these credits, is this similar to what we're working on with our stream bank mitigation project, and this is just, we would have, we're purchasing from another?
This is for wetlands and not the, there's, they're two different things, you got wetlands, and we have stream bank mitigation. We actually, on this project, will have both, or Oaktville, or we'll have both, but, so this is a wetlands bank that I think the county owns, correct? Or is it somebody else? Manage it, okay, the conservation board does, okay.
But you're, you're right, that it works similarly.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So that in the future, we would, that people would, when we finish that other project, people would be able to purchase these types of credits directly from us.
Correct.
Okay.
Stream bank, that way.
Stream bank.
This is the wetlands ones.
Yes, okay, but a similar mechanism.
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay. Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 23, West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1 Tree Felling. This project dropped trees in the West Land Use Central Trunk Phase 1 project area before the April 1, Indiana BAT tree removal ban deadline. This pay estimate is for the retainage and will be released upon approval. Could I get a motion to approve the pay estimate?
So moved.
Moved by Jones.
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item B, could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1 Tree Felling as completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. All right, I lost my paper. This is such a big.
Too many pages.
I know, there's too many pages. Okay, I found it. We're on item 23. Okay.
24.
24, sorry. Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff on this agenda. Okay, item 24, First Avenue Improvement Project, Sixth Street to Ninth Street. This project constructed street and infrastructure improvements to First Avenue between Sixth Street and Ninth Street, and the retainage will be released with this payment. Could I have a motion to approve the pay estimate?
So moved.
There you go.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. And could I have the resolution?
Resolution accepting the First Avenue Improvements Project, Sixth Street to Ninth Street as completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 25, Fifth Street Water Main Improvements, 2023. This project will install new 12-inch diameter, a new 12-inch diameter, diameter water main along Fifth Street from 20th Avenue East to Morrison Creek, and the public hearing for this will be on June 13, 2023. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for the Fifth Street Water Main Improvements 2023 project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution has approved all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 26, Hyatt Regency Restaurant and Lounge Renovation Project. This project is for the renovation of the bar and restaurant area of the Hyatt Regency Corleville Hotel and Conference Center, and the public hearing for this will be on June 13, 2023. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids and directing notice of the same, all for the Hyatt Regency Restaurant and Lounge Renovation Project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Any questions or comments on this?
I would just comment that this will happen in two phases. The first one has, starting fairly shortly after the bids are received, and then finishing up by Labor Day, and then the second phase, starting again after, after about Thanksgiving, late November, and finishing up by February. And so that'll allow us to have finished space during the, the football season, and, and to continue to operate as well as we can with, with that.
Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.[1740.08]
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent. Item 27, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve consent calendar as presented, A to double B.
Moved by Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes with Knutson and Gross absent.
Madam Mayor, may I just ask a question?
Sure, yeah.
So where do we stand, Ellen, on the rehab project? I see where, there's two items, two payments here on two different properties, in the consent calendar. So are there other homes that are being rehabbed now, or?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're referring to. Oh, yes, I, I think we are fin, we just finished up the final home in the, in that CBG housing rehab project. So I think we did seven in the end, and then we'll be closing out that one. We have not had access to any additional funding since then. I think there is some funding maybe coming available through the county that people might be able to apply for, but I don't know if that's been finalized yet.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item 28, City Administrators Report.
I would just like to thank people for their patience with construction throughout construction season, also known as summer here in Iowa. And some good news from the engineering department is that Camp Cardinal Boulevard is expected to open by the end of next week, along with that trail connection between Highway Six and the Tom Harkin Trailhead. So we're all pretty excited about that, so look for that late next week.
Awesome. Thank you. Mayor's report, I just have to say, I'm very excited about that opening up again. Especially when I take my daughter to weightlifting at West High at six in the morning, and we have to take the long way around. That'll be, that'll be fantastic. Just a couple of very quick things. I wanted to just remind folks about the Memorial Day schedule. City offices are closed, is that correct?
Yes, city offices are closed.
Okay.
And trash collection will be one day late all week.
Okay. And we will, I am assuming, we'll be having our ceremony in the cemetery?
Yes, the cemetery ceremony is at 10?
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen.
Thank you, eleven fifteen. Great, eleven fifteen. Okay, yep, so that's a really, really special event. If, that will be at the Oakdale Cemetery, is our tradition, keeping our tradition going every year. Other things, I wanted to just say, congratulations to our colleague, Councilmember Winn, on a very, very successful Asian, inaugural Asian Fest. It was, it was amazing. So, really, really well attended, and, you know, had some weather, but still, lots and lots of people came out, and it was just really well done. And I wanted to say congratulations to you and your team, and I know that this is just the first of many events to come in the, in the coming years. And I love that the inaugural, inaugural event, the inaugural Asian Fest, was held during our sesquicentennial year, because I feel very strongly, you know, our theme is rich history and bright future. And I feel very strongly that our bright future, Coralville's bright future, lies within the tremendous diversity that we have in this community. And that was really showcased at, at that event, just one example of, you know, all of the cultures and the, the people that we have here that are from all over the world, that make, have made significant contributions to our community. They're a part of our history as well, and a really important part of making our community special and, and what it is. So, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And then I just also wanted to say, regarding, you know, June being Gun Violence Awareness Month, and the, and June 2nd, Gun Violence Awareness Day, you know, gun violence is, is an issue that none of our communities are immune. We're not, nobody's immune to the impact of gun violence. And, you know, while we might not hear about a lot of high-profile incidents, which, you know, of course, we're grateful for here, it, it, you know, continues to be an, an issue. And I'm pleased to say that there is a group that has formed a new community initiative. I, I, it's, it's brand new. I'm on the, the leadership committee for this effort. It's a community violence intervention program that we're working on with the county attorney. It is the brainchild of Supervisor Roy Sand Porter and the county. And there are various stakeholders, myself, Mayor Teague, the police chief in North Liberty, Sheriff Kunkel, Rachel Rockwell, who is the executive director of the Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County, and a gentleman named Tony Wilson. Are, we're all working on this initiative together. It's based on a model that was used in Cedar Rapids. And, and the goal is to provide custom notifications, and, you know, a lot of support and intervention to help prevent youth group violence and youth gun violence. And so this is just getting off the ground. We, we are in the process of hiring the director to oversee that program. But I'm very excited about this effort, because it, it really brings together a lot of stakeholders, you know, municipal leaders, community leaders, law enforcement, to come together and to really address this, this issue in, in our community. So, really grateful for that, and just, you know, remind everyone to check out what Moms Demand Action is up to. They always have a lot of great activities throughout the month of June. And that's all I have. City Attorney's Report.
I was pleased to see Councilmember Jones, where I stand up with the Hills Bank Group. He certainly has been one of the pillars in the bank. I can't help but mention that it would have been nice to have Albert Grohl here, who was the principal pillar back in the old days. But that's all I have.
Nothing.
All right. Committee and council members report. Let's start with Councilmember Winn, since there's nobody down there. Because I think we started down there.
Mix it up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I would like to say thank you to the community who, you know, the community of the City of Coralville, and a community member who showed up and showed out to enjoy the first ever Asian Festival at Esti Morrison Park. The reason myself and a few of my girlfriend wanted to have that celebration in our city is just like Mayor said, we live in a very diverse community, and the diversity make our community a great community to live in. And how do we retain that diversity and show our appreciation, you know, to the many, many communities who call Coralville home? We have celebration, where we highlight a lot of, you know, different culture, different way of life, different, you know, food that we enjoy in our, in our community. And it's so heartwarming to see that people from all walk of life come out and celebrate a rich history of the Asian community, and also the rich history and the bright future of the City of Coralville. We have some terrible weather to begin with, and we thought that, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to call off the, the festival. But somehow, some way, it all worked out. People stayed around, and actually, more and more showed up, because the, a miracle happened. All of that tornadoes and, and strong wind and all of that, somehow, some way, just, just took a different direction, and it turned out to be a beautiful day. We can't wait to, to start planning the second and the third, and, you know, keep this as an annual tradition in our community. And thank you so much to the City of Coralville for their support. The staff has been amazing. We pivot at the last minute with a lot of things, and it all worked out. Thank you to Johnson County, especially the Office of Diversity and Inclusion for their support. Various businesses locally here lend their supporting hand, because without their support, we wouldn't be able to, you know, to, to have the festival that, that we had. So thank you so much. And look for the planning next year, and if you have something brewing, keep that going, because you have a stage for next year to perform. Summer reading program kickoff is happening again in, in, in our wonderful library. It's gonna be June 1st, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that is one of my favorite summer kickoff program here. We participate every year. I have four children, and they are always looking forward to that. We were quite sad when that went away during COVID, and this is the first year that is coming back. We'll be able to gather in person. Hills Bank again sponsor with ice cream and activities. So come on out, even if you don't have children, come out, celebrate with us, because our community is getting back to normalcy again. Along with that, the Coralville Community Food Pantry is starting off the summer with a summer feeding program. This is something that have happened before in our community, but through the lack of support and intervention, somehow, some way, it just went away. And we would like to bring it back, with the support of the commu, the school district, and some other local restaurant and businesses around. It will start the June 13, and it go all the way until August 20, and every single week for eight weeks. If you have children that is 18 and under, they can come and eat with us from Tuesday to Friday, at 11:00 to 30:00 to 1:00 o'clock. And then after lunch, we have activity ranging from the Teary Museum, the Bike Library, Antelope Landing Library. Our own library will come and have activity as well. Some activity with Grove Johnson County. So there's a lot, a lot of fun educational activity happening. So come on out, June 13. We'll, we'll see you there. We'll share some good food and some fun activity. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I've signed up for some volunteer shifts for that, because I was like, oh my gosh, that looks like so much fun, for the, the summer lunch thing. Yeah, so I'm looking forward to, to doing that in June.
Yeah, and if you have some time, come on out and volunteer with us as well.
Yes, absolutely. All right, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to take a minute. This time of year, I'm always reminded of the quality of K-12 public education we have in our community. It's one of the things that makes this community so great. And so I just wanted to recognize and congratulate all those graduating seniors. It really does reinforce our bright future when you look at the quality of these young people that are graduating from our public schools. I also like to just take a second, and there's a number of educators retiring this year. They had their service salute, I think, last week, honoring the retiring teachers in our school system. And I think the number was like 160 or some, a lot of, a lot of good people. And, and so I want to thank them for all they've done for our, our children. And I want to shout out specifically to Rob Med, who is retiring this year. Rob has been the band director at West High School for 23 years, something like that. And, and having had children before Rob came, and then through that period, it's just remarkable how he's turned the band program at West High into a state, regional, and nationally-recognized program. So, and Rob is a Coralville resident, and so I just wanted to congratulate Rob on, on his retirement, and thank him for all he's done for our schools. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. And finally, Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you. I'm going to look forward, and speaking of June, for the Coralville 150 events. Just want to mention that you can go on the corolla.org website, and there's a little box at the top, and it's Coralville 150. And as you scroll through that, you'll see all the events that are happening. We do one a month, and Eighth Avenue History Walk will be June 11. And that's from 1:00 to 3:00 on that Sunday, the 11th. And the walk will start on Eighth Avenue and Fifth Street. It'll leave at about 1:15, and then it will conclude at the north end of Eighth Avenue with refreshments, chairs, and shade. And there'll be many people along the way who will give different thoughts about what it was like in Coralville, and talk about different people. And we'll also be seeing some of the wheat pasting that has been talked about over the last year, and some will have it on their garages, which will be interesting pictures of historical pictures, or whatever. It'll just be fun to see. And then in referring to wheat pasting, I'd like for you to, to see the Coralville Library. There's so much information about that. And they're taking pictures of children for the Inside Out Project, and preparing for the buildings that the wheat pasting will be on, and that will be towards the end of June. And then, of course, July 1 through the 4th is Fourth Fest, and we just have a plethora of many events, activities that are coming up for that. So please look on the website, or refer to the library, or here at City Hall, of course, where you can get information about all those things. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Jones, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.